Through this work session of the historic preservation official, Towne Clarkdale, Tuesday, July 11th, 6:30 PM. I sincerely thank everybody for joining us tonight and keeping those online channels and staff there during town rallies. And then I will, I will go call the admission of present.
Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Lindner. Vice Chair Gabbard. And, oops, sorry, Chair Gibson.
People come in and please, if you're a popular voter, please come and join us at the table.
Simpson, with the, hi Simpson, with Texas Southern.
Again, over there, there is, there's us. So I'll go ahead, I have, we have a discussion I don't really know, or certainly I've got to take it, or, uh, so we both know, if there are any chances, if I need to have this word
And then, maybe do you want to join us up front with the state law? All right. Oh, okay. That's fine. Uh, well, opt-in versus opt-out, opt-out versus mandatory regulation, interiors, interior structures, integrity, and appeals. So I want to talk on about opt-in, opt-out, advantage, or if a little bit, this is biggest thing, but they should talk about, talk about. So I know we've all heard me talk about opt-in or second. The biggest issue for, uh, what it's to the state.
It's with state law, sorry about that. Um, so when we talk about mandatory, it's not mandatory mandatory, because the proposition 207 requires that an applicant demonstrate how property, their property is affected, what the diminution of value, what that action is, that is in the ordinance that is diminishing the value of their property. Technically speaking, if you can't prove that the value of your property is being diminished, then we can't do anything to remove you from the district or to, um, for this not to apply to you in the way that it would apply to everyone else. The opt-out still leaves the onus, if we go to an opt-out version, which is the, what we've been discussing as well, that leaves the onus for action on the building owners and on the business owners. And really, if you're, I, staff believes strongly that the opt-in require, that requires an affirmative action on the part of the business or building owners that want to participate is much fairer to those who don't want to participate. The assumption that their building is automatically in, uh, it really should be an action on the building owner's part to participate and sign up for, for the, the benefits that the district offers. So that was the first place I wanted to start. So I know this is a big issue for everybody, so I'm happy to listen to any comments anybody Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
You can demonstrate yourself.
Sure. Maybe Perkins does that. I think the one that are.
Can you project what we're all going to say?
Just loud, so we can hear. Yes.
Yeah.
I have a problem doing this.
Me neither.
Um, I think the property owners that have indicated that they're not interested in participating are actually not interested in this being asked of them, not with the opt-in, not with the opt-out, not with the, and I just want to make that rule.
Sure. So even with the, even with the, just from my own understanding, and I think for understanding of some of the other people here, even with the opt-out, is there, is, is there an issue that causes you to not want to participate even with the opt-out?
I think that it's unnecessary, it's government, it's position, it's unnecessary for a model property person to also monitor, um, it's opt-in, opt-out, because what I've noticed with most in this quality is it becomes a ratchet effect. So right now it's opt-in, opt-out, then in maybe five, 10 years, there's a switch. Boy, it doesn't come and opt-in, opt-out, and all of a sudden people aren't paying attention. They're on, they're under a claw, because you have a limited amount of time to contest the, the, and so it just creates a situation where the, where the property owners have to be constantly vigilant. I mean, the, the, the meetings had gone on, uh, trying to create this board and create this, uh, ordinance, really not with the participation and, or in some ways, the awareness of, of the property owners until all of a sudden, the board had met multiple times, about three more, you know, they've been in place, like you just have to release attention to, to these kinds of appearances if you want to, not having, uh, say, and probably happen. And if you happen to be out of the area, or if you happen to be busy with other stuff, it's not like they send out these notices to certify and pay attention to this, up to group of staff, you get eight or 10 letters from the Towne Clarkdale on a regular basis, your, your regular notices, you build stop, every single time, all of a sudden.
So is there a more effective way for us to communicate?
Um, probably at a earlier stage.
I'm sorry?
It would have been helpful.
Yes.
Had it been communicated at the onset of the very beginning, the very creation, uh, not, not, not after a document had been reached.
So.
I do think the phone calls that you've been making are very helpful. I mean, there are only 16 property owners that we've talked about in the park, and that doesn't take too much time, but pretty, hey, this is some important stuff, I think it's going to directly affect your property. Um, that's been, that's been great. I know, like, special treatment about kind of intention is a little excessive, but it really does highlight the importance of these kinds of ordinance, because they do impact properties.
So when we did start this, um, back in February, I believe, of last year, we did send letters out when we had the open house and all of that, so that people could attend that and talk about this ordinance and hear what the consultant was talking about at that point. We've posted the meetings, I know it's not convenient for everyone that, that we don't notify for every single meeting, but we'd be doing nothing but notifying about meetings because I already, we have three boards and commissions in our department. I hear what you're saying about the, the difficulty with the communication, and, and I, I understand your concerns about the ratcheting up of the, of the regulations. Um, it's, it's true that if for you to, planning commi, or a planning, Town Council, excuse me, not Planning Commission, could change the ordinance. However, for them to do that, there is a statutory process that requires that we publish in a newspaper, that we notify anybody that's affected, this is why you all have been mailed pa, copies of the packets, so that you are aware of what's going on. So.
I think these folks have attended some of those first meetings, seemed as though the, the ordinance was going to get brought, uh, because there were some concerns from the attorney, the attorney, and talked about the, the.
Prop 207.
Issues. And then I do recall seeing people were, it was supposed to happen in February, but then all of a sudden it closed, we weren't allowed to attend. Um, and then there was a later one in kind of April, we were about. So there was a meeting that happened between there, there's a, and I'm remembering the packets, but it's limited to just the council and.
So that was a public work session between the council and the board, the public was absolutely invited to attend, so that there was no, we can't hold a public hearing or a public meeting like that without allowing the public to come.
I, I would.
Sure.
Um, and Chairman Gibson mentioned that they'd been working on this.
Right.
So that was during one of the meetings that had been made perhaps, and it was a little elevated.
Correct.
Motion, so that's used to me that four years, the first meeting I got it was three years.
So we, when we initially started talking about this in, back in 2021, we sent letters out to all of the building owners in downtown to let everybody know that we were going to start talking about this at a, at a meeting. No one came.
You know, it, uh, I don't remember getting a letter, okay, for you can't edit it, but.
But I, I.
I don't know that it really matters compared to the other.
Right, and I do appreciate you coming, I really do, and I appreciate your input.
If you mind if I ask some follow-up questions for clarification, I would, it's important to have you speak.
Absolutely.
Is that, so it's, um, this, so you said that, I told the studio representative, and that the business owners, you spoke of a community of business owners that don't want it passed at all, and then I could be mistaken, but I believe you made three points, and one of them, the first one was that it was unnecessary, the second one was that you're concerned once an ordinance is passed, then it should be amended, and then you had a third point, and was the third point that, that you were not informed, except were those your three points? And then I have another question. The third point is just, it's really hard to be vigilant, so it's hard to. Okay, and then you also mentioned, and once again, I'm not questioning you, I'm just asking for clarifications so I can understand better. You spoke of a community, and then you said there are 16 property owners, and, you know, I'll trust you on that, but do you have, I don't know how to properly ask this question, but have you been asked to represent those people, so that when you say, um, no, most of us don't want it passed, are you, are you representing those other 16 property owners? Or just not? No, I have a person that's when I'm with, 2000, they didn't come and test it, because we have six of those Main Street properties, of which there are 16, I counted them.
So, so you just represent the conling group, but not the other components?
Yeah, and I, I've had that conversation. So it seems like, and I think I asked him prior, um, were there any property owners that were for, maybe we'll be sure against it, but have we heard anything from anybody that's for it, and nobody has heard of any property, like, yeah.
I actually have heard from at least one that is, that is in support of it.
And, and do we know that?
It's Baker Land Company, I met with Mr. Baker Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, they own the one with the, um, spa and virgin cheese.
And then, clarify why, um, recommendations or the ordinance unnecessary? We currently have a pretty clear ordinance that talks about some of these historical requirements, and it, it just doesn't, it does not seem that anything, uh, that the quality of the, of the return is that much greater than what. Uh, second off, they're having a harder time, they're having a hard time getting their ordinance in, in, I think, for fashion, to get stuff done, um, and that maybe that affects your layer, or, I mean, adds time, and I know that you guys have gotten it fixed, and I did process, but that's, I mean, that almost seems like.
I get your point, you know, like, I know exactly what you're saying, so.
And I, I want everyone to know, I don't think the, we asked those.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I can step in, um, for us, it's just even, it's on, a lot of research, and a lot of, especially about what effect this, this has on us, what effect it could have on us, and one major issue, I think I mentioned, we live in San Diego, Mexico, um, when you go to sell your property, it's called a spuds, I believe.
Yep, spuds.
Sell our property disclosure, say.
Yep.
Um, I have talked about the spuds, when we bought a building in 2016, here, and the owner at that time disclosed that it was in the Bay Harbor district, um, it's similar to that here, uh, remains, you say, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a, you have to explain, and there's additional paperwork to include that, so there was no additional paperwork when we bought it, we just disclosed that, we couldn't search, we didn't tell, we asked for questions, there was no ordinance, we felt, there was no problem, I was moving, we want to, we broke laws, um, so if this gets passed, and we, I did that, we go to sell our building in the future, we have to disclose if it's in, for example, we have to disclose a property, uh, ordinance, and in its current form, I would not buy this meeting, I would do it. This ordinance is just, there's, it's, there's a lot of things that are confusing, it's confusing, there's a lot of things that I have questions, like, well, what is this, explain this, explain this, and it's going to scare off a few of the buyer. And at the very least, uh, we have a wide hold of seller, a wide hold of digital buyers, as soon as this one makes, gets passed, and I have to disclose that, it limits it.
So.
That's one factor, I mean, I just have one of.
Sure, sure, no, 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 go ahead.
Um, one other factor is, this row of buildings on Main Street all have shared architectural features, so we, when we bought a building, a survey had been done, they think that it was redrawn, but there are currently pins from the survey, and they have a little of shared parapets with our neighbors. So if we have a neighbor that opts in, and we don't, and there's an issue with a parapet, and in here, I think it says, the parapet must be for, and that thing causes a very specific situation, I would split the ownership of the parapet, if one is opting and one is not a, opt-in, it just is like, uh, ties up everything's all, and I don't know if anyone knows, we split, we split the parapet, every building.
Sure.
Right, that's, that's.
Right. That's, you're absolutely correct.
We have a neighbor on one side who are happy to work with, because we know, we talked to him, and we've discussed, like, if, 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 have those issues, we're going to deal with that together, but there's an ordinance, right? But if an ordinance causes this, like, okay, you know, if you're in, we're out, or vice versa, it's going to cause a real challenge for.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to verify that.
Yes, and if somebody wanted, if a future buyer wanted to opt-in, they would, they could do that, but they're not required to opt-in.
That would have to be disclosed, so they know that once they purchase it, they have that option.
Correct.
So it would be, it would have to be disclosed.
It would be disclosed that there is an historic district that this property has opted out, it would be person could pop, opt-in if they want.
I, I would still, as a property owner who wants a clean deal, I would still, it's with that ordinance, because I, some property is, and, suppose, any, and you know, that might affect the purchase price of the purchase of, any.
But, or should it be clarification, the difference in draft, you know?
Uh-huh.
So it, that's, why, looking at the map.
Yeah, let's, look at the map, I think that's nice. That's all right. All right, Gus, this thing has given out on me. Can you click, oh. Next. There we go, so this is option A, which is the opt-in, this one includes the industrial park or the industrial area, so that in the future, while I know that the train has probably little to no interest in selling, the, um, property that is now Clarkdale Minerals could change hands, the, the, um, building that was the auto dealership could change hands, and the Miller Building could change hands, and future owners there could opt-in.
Oh, well, it is the rail, it's actually three different companies.
Correct.
So that if the owners decided, let's say, sell off, with land properties, sell off a chunk of that, right, and Verde Canyon doesn't own any property, just essentially that's certainly not a real, where, Arizona's central, and, and, so I guess there is a theory on the tip, that it could.
Right. But that would, that would provide the future owner the ability to opt-in.
So I just, I just didn't know what, I was going over with the whole.
Right.
Usually, the option B and option A are together, or is it?
No, it would be one or the other, so it would be, this is option A, and Gus, can you go to the next slide, please? This would be option B, so if it, if it's mandatory, or there's no opt, if it's an opt-out, then we would go straight to just this, because all of the property owners in the histor, in the industrial park have stated that do not want to participate. So it's easier to just take them out and stick with the downtown than to include them.
Well, the fact that you guys know that recently, I don't see a map that, I'm, but in the one that we've built out recently, it actually says that there is.
No, I think if you look at the, and we'll go through it page by page.
Is anybody monitoring Zoom questions?
If you look at the bottom of page 15 or 46, and then the top of page 47, if the owner opts to apply the standards of this section, uh, the applicable standards shall be applied, and opt-in form must be signed by the property owner and submitted to the town prior to issuance of any building permits under the historic preservation ordinance. So that's the opt-in. This is, I, I have extras if you'd like it.
Can, can we ask a question from Zoom?
Can anyone here, Gus, who are on Zoom?
No, what I'm saying is, we have two different versions of the map, so that if we approve the additional language opting, that provides the opt-in for people to participate, we would adopt this map, right? If we were to not provide the opt-in, right, it would be this map.
So what you're saying is, the industrial, you said that they're going to lawyer up, you're going to cut them loose with a, with no opt-in, but then the people that are, that are uptown, they don't get any.
No, you do have the opt-in option, that's, that's what we're here to discuss tonight, is the language about the opt-in option. If we can agree on that language, then we can move forward. Yeah. Sure, anybody else?
Sure.
Breakback, I'm putting one Main Street, um, I'd like to say that I'm agreeing about both of their, that, if you look at the level, I know, I was involved with historic preservation people, beginning, about four years with that, so when I chimed in the beginning, I chimed in because I was concerned about what it was going to do to the levels of development for the downtown area, how it would affect the development of the downtown area, it should become more of a, a live, a viable area, and that's our problem right now, we all know that. So, and now that my property's developed, of course, I'm concerned about everybody else, how their, oh, their, probably, how their values are, maybe, so again, Karen's like, okay, I was property, now, I'm worried about the future, but that does, our values do, uh, so, and then, that, that's a big concern for all of us, as property owners, on how it affects that future value as a property owner, now as a, love of Clarkdale, of course, I want to make sure that Clarkdale stays with its, uh, with its atmosphere and what it does, so that's why I was like, kind of right of fence, or any full site, because I need to be able to make sure that Clarkdale retains its character without diminishing the ability for growth, so that is, that is the challenge that I run, I think that's why we fight this back and forth, how do we retain that and restore this thing?
Correct.
And I think the option that people have, or they can't, option in, option out, is a good way to go, I don't want to see people who opt out to get the back burner, and get the, uh, you opted out, sorry, you know, you're going to, it's going to take us some time to deal with you, but you opt out, now if you opt in, okay, we're going to help you out, we're going to show you some favors, okay, if I get that, that's kind of cool, if you some of the fees, but if somebody chooses to opt out because they feel like they're going to retain Clarkdale no matter what, but they don't want somebody telling them how to deal with it, that's their option, I want to see them have a hard time in the
Thank you. Yes, Martin. Okay, so I'm sorry, Todd, you've been waiting? Okay, so I'm sorry, Todd, you've been waiting? He's muted.
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yep.
Turn it up.
Turn your volume up, please.
Yes, my volume's all the way up.
Okay.
Just speak loudly.
Okay, I'll speak loudly. Um, I'm sorry, I appreciate you letting me make a comment through Zoom. I just wanna go backwards just a teeny bit, where people were talking about the communication and the process and being included. Um, one of the things that bothers me about this meeting, first of all, I really support a historic ordinance of some kind. And I really appreciate all the work and effort we've been putting into it. But the timing of this meeting bothers me just a little bit. Because one of the things we're deciding in an election that's coming up is to use OpenGov. And OpenGov is a tool that municipalities and towns can use to collect input. And exchange this input amongst each other. I, I would have loved to have known, uh, how the cheese shop owner feels about this. I would have loved to know how the railroad felt about this a long time ago. And OpenGov is site is subject-specific. It puts all the information, all the maps, it lets you do surveys, lets you do comments. And it, it brings the town together. And so part of what, what we're really trying to decide in the next election is to use OpenGov. Now, of course, there are people that aren't in favor of OpenGov. I mean, I really respect, for example, a colleague here tonight. Um, the honorable, distinguished, highly respected Bill Regner. He might have the position that, you know, government officials or a government-elected person kind of has more knowledge or more information, and they should be the ones to decide that. But, but I personally would really like to see us have a system that, you know, is more inclusive and lets people post their opinion, so I know what everybody's thinking before we get this far. And OpenGov is not another social media, it's not another Facebook. It's very controlled and used by a civic government to help us communicate better. But, uh, thank you for letting me say that through Zoom. Um, but also, I really hope we do have some kind of historic preservation, because I, I really like to see us keep the atmosphere of Clarkdale and keep what, what makes Clarkdale, Clarkdale. Um, I hope you can hear me okay, and, and thanks for listening.
So anybody else online?
Online, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd. Green.
Green. Drake?
I would like to say that the opt-in, opt-out solution is a good one. Very easily. Opt-out, there's no sign up. See why there is even an issue.
Parapets.
And plus, I went to see, um, ask about. Case studies. Of historical preservation. So, a person's opinion about it. Ask case studies. They go, ordinance. That, do they work in another, does an H. DZ ordinance work in another town? Is world, I the only town that it won't work in? And then, of course, this is the culmination of four years, five years of efforts here. I've been to a lot of those meetings. And they're just gonna be exactly the same. Whether somebody didn't come to them, the only way I found out about this. This way. Here. It came to me in letters, it came to me online, posted on forums, and so forth. So, four years ago, it was very culmination of this whole thing, was the AS.
Sorry.
The AS study. Many of us went to that meeting about how to move the parapet. And the answers came back with two thousand dollars' worth of essence. From students, professors, and case studies across the nation of how to move a historic district that was long-term vacant. From a twenty-year employer that left the town. How to move those empty buildings from. How they still don't get shot, instead of everybody going to the town park and say, I didn't stop there because it feels empty. Which is a case study that I got, not that, these are not. So they said to establish a certified local, sent to establish. They, in the case, uh, study, something as you had to start importance to get things moving, you want to build these buildings. And they also identified all the properties in the town. You know, the architecture was one, how to move that though. Um, the benefits are many out there. Much, many benefits out there. But if you don't wanna. Well, I just to follow up on that. How, just hypothetically, how is this ordinance gonna draw in business? Who's gonna say, oh, look, there's a historical district, I'm gonna go there?
They're actually.
One of the case studies that we passed about five. Case studies tell us that historic districts, that historic signs on roads, brought people to. People, they draw people. How do you draw businesses? You draw businesses by creating, um, getting rid of these empty buildings that are sitting in town, like, they're sitting there for two years. And. You get to. It's a question. How do you get people to fill those buildings? How do you get people, well, right now, look there, we have almost every building, they have a permanent. And they're being built, okay?
I think there's a difference between that historic district and historic, those are two different things. I don't think anybody's like, hey, I wanna buy a building, but that's for. That's generally.
You can answer your question. It's people like Becky and I that love the atmosphere, that love the building, that know that we created the business, like, use. That the people will come to it. Appreciate it. But, so that's, yeah, wow, those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
It's not, it's not, it's not a story.
Wrong. I'm already in a historic district, how is the, how is this, how is this ordinance gonna help?
It's not, it's not gonna help that.
It's gonna be more like. Allows them to keep, uh, like the ranch and stuff, keep their.
Renovation, I'm speaking.
Renovation.
So, I.
One of the benefits that. Well, if you're getting cash, do your building, if you wanna do it anyways, that's, I don't know, pretty scary to me. Plus, and, and, sort of, we're in here. I know there was one study that was brought up by the, it was estimated that, that said that certain values are down. I, I couldn't find that study.
I'd be happy to, we know it too, except Book Market.
What can you do to ruin this? All this study is that I went after. Said that property values would up, uh, between. Five, ten percent. Versus. You're gonna sell it, that. Because of the district or because of the ordinance?
He says of, of secret preservation district, or there were rules on expecting you to outside. Which we already are in, right? Are we not already in a historic district?
Yeah.
There's historic addition of preservation.
There's no ordinance that, that regulates the exterior of the buildings. Right now. If, if someone wants to make a change to the exterior of, of a, of a commercial building, it goes to the design review board. So regardless of whether we adapt the historic preservation ordinance or not, there is still review of those projects.
So, what, why have two review boards that are gonna do different things, but the same thing? They're not, just everything in the preservation district, we've done the historic preservation. So why have the ordinance? I, I, that's what I, I'm, I'm not understanding.
Because.
Why, why you're saying the same people are gonna do the same job for the same. Uh, same people are doing. Staff, you're using the same staff. But it's gonna go through a different commission, because the commissioners on this commission. By federal law, have special qualifications, that other boards, commissions are not, are even, now councils, right? Those, we have special, or. Uh, colleagues that we name through, like, in archaeology, history, art of construction.
Right. Archaeology, planning, history. Historic preservation, all of those kinds of things.
We weren't just pulled out of streets, I know you have that qualification, so. We don't have, we don't have property in this district, so we don't even spin the game, and so we understand. That you do, okay? This ordinance was passed by the town council, which created the commission. Part of the, the long list of things that we were tasked to do was create for it. So you're just following the staff, it tells us to do it with the town council.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd just like to share something. This Clarkdale is not. Alone. Um, it's actually thirty communities, some. Will be concerned by what the problems. Passes through. I'm all the way back to nineteen eighty-six. Pretty disappointing to me that Clarkdale, being a Clarkdale, uh, town that has public, where this is. Take up the entire district. They're not on this list. I'll pass this around so you can see, uh, these are all very successful communities that have very large. Very affluent downtowns that that is considered, that, um, probably went back to their roots. Uh, most part of these. These. Uh, I think it says a lot that if there are thirty communities, various sizes, it was a horizontal process. Passed through by the government, came up with historic preservation ordinance, opened up opportunities. Those are assistance, uh, historic properties, which move otherwise out. So, I only have this out, this question, but it's not something that we can deny, or historic preservation. I'm probably one of the very few people in this room. That you thought you, you probably remember. Not sure if that, that. And Clarkdale's downtown on, uh, Wolf's. So, you know, I've seen this whole thing that's been going on for thirty-five years. I'm waiting for this to happen, that you guys are waiting for it to happen. But I've also seen things happen between them. Where some not so good things have happened with. The other thing I want to clarify is that the commission was seated four years ago. Ordinance is not the process. Years. The first thing that we started with were some bases. Like, uh, an inventory of what are the things that we need to get out of. What are the design features, what are the components that are important for us to. Tech, the earth, maybe. You take them out. Uh, we lose their store, the scatters. I brought some pictures out there that were taken in December length, seven. Six months after the town, in the town. In Independence. Uh, it's kind of a good base on. There were two buildings on Main Street that just been modified. Especially staying. And it was under. Uh, modifications that were made on these buildings in nineteen fifty-seven, very typical, uh, world-class town. Uh, so a lot of nice buildings. Um, and the historic resource survey was done in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, ten years before the historic district was actually established. Uh, those buildings, uh, even though they had some qualification that needs to be done. Nonetheless, they're bound to be contributing structures to the historic district. The two buildings on Main Street that were not, I'm just talking about the historic portion of the process. Uh, but even Sepulsa building, nineteen eighty-nine, Sepulsa building, uh, then ten twelve building. But not a qualified, because it had to be spent about fifty years of age. And neither had the gas station. So, uh, all the buildings on Main Street are, that came from the medical department. A list of this contributing almost to the historic district. And they remain today as. So, you know, I'll pass this out to you guys to take a look at for the city councils. That have gone through this process. You can judge for yourself as to whether or not they're successful in having a successful business district. Economic development. That's one of the things that made you ask, why can't you do this? It's been proven, other ASU students, uh, I've heard that. It's proven that historic preservation actually drives economic growth. But that's all.
Thank you. Dan, do you, do you hit something?
Yeah. Um. Railroad, I mean, obviously, one of the big. The railroad, you know, drives. Many of the businesses. And as many may know from other city council meetings and things like that. We are taking great strides to push that forward. Um, spending millions. Uh, to, to drive further economic growth. And this historical, we, I'm not saying that we didn't get one. All the letters go for our, our pork and all. Um, however, we didn't know that about it until we bought itself. That's when we started. When we actually bought that sort of building, even though our land was in the. But as soon as we started to see this, it started to create talks. Do we want to develop all this open land that's the high source of the future? That's toxic? You know, I was sitting right next to the listen. Um, that's going to be developed now, drive economic growth now, set up high sky industrial zone. One of our biggest concerns is the lines that are drawn, split in that industrial, they're essentially half. Uh, because you think, I'm, and that's currently. Can't really do much with that, you know? It causes questions, so like, for example. The railroad has to take control of this better than we. And our, uh, easements, right? So I could build a building in a fifty-foot easement, and you don't tell me I can do it. Right? Uh, because it's governed by the federal number. And I guess, in, in an act of good faith, you know. Railroad, we can cut some of the land we're going to buy, so half of our land is put on the outside of the historic district, so if we develop it. We have to then extend the, the, I, I guess, for the sign elements, that. Um, to make sure that, that branding management. And we do have concerns about, you know, when people are building new groundhouses. Acquired, then we have to make it look like the wings over at, uh, Olson-Helfer. But how, I, I get the ideas with the cutting, but how are you gonna apply those same principles to new builds? An area that felt, have, a lot, and you can't, can't apply it to the same architectural structure as a skeleton house, industrial building. And no one builds buildings like the pound house.
Right.
And I guess, for the sake to move along to the council. Railroad is willing to join the historic district if there is an opportunity. Um, with the understanding of.
Sure.
However, we do have concerns. In the other, that encroachment of government that opens the door a little bit. And you're down a road, which is fine, because it happens all the time with the, with the change of administrations. Sometimes you have railroad guys, and they should say, oh, yeah, you're fine, then, new president, it's okay there.
Sure.
Um, so, I would just say we are willing to. Opt, to put our voice forward and say we will be part of the district if we opt in.
Thank you.
So, so what are the solutions we set with the district, the vol?
Yeah, well, no. But not to say, but you guys are missing. Well, I mean, so. Uh, we don't want that, but I'm just saying it's a little bit long, so that, you know, it doesn't come to any potential, or if that's happening. Is not to take the railroad up, who did it assholes, but leave the opt-in for that, even though. Railroad belongs to. Uh, and it's probably. Those, because if we don't develop, we don't bring in. Right now, we're bringing in over a hundred thousand people.
Right.
That's four hundred people a day. On Saturdays, we bring in a thousand people. So, instead of sending in cottonwood, which, the whole reason downtown cotton moved through is because of. The only reason it moved is because railroad is, they want to, for the jobs to know. And what we want to send them, we send them to Snowtown, we buy their beer, you know, we, we want this to grow. And so while we think that this, the historic district is needed to keep the peace and get a team member, we're willing to stay part of it if we have.
Well, permission to stop.
I have some que, I'm sorry, I've been, I have some questions that would help me understand. So I, let's see, I'm asking, I'm not questioning, but it just helps me understand. So, sir, excuse me, I go over your name, would I be concluding that you're from Saint Cecilia?
Yes, Father Stinson.
Stinson?
S T I N, that's so right.
So Father Stinson, you've been very animated with your concerns, um, about any kind of ordinance or regulation or rules. I'm curious, because you're, with Saint Cecilia's, are you s, and, and I could be completely wrong, but might I also conclude that you don't own the church? So you're not the property owner?
Correct.
So are you speaking on the path of the church, the diocese, or is there your own concern?
Father, uh, uh, Father David Kalesh is the one who asked me to come to these meetings. So he's, he's the property owner, I would guess, I mean, he's by a landlord anyway.
Father Kalesh.
It's like rubbish, but with a K.
And he owns the building?
It's owned by.
I don't know whether that he does. Is, I, I don't know if it's actually owned by the diocese, so who do you say owns it, the bishop?
The di, it's the, the owner of record is the Diocese of Phoenix.
Diocese of Phoenix.
Yeah, so he probably does their property management.
And so he's the property manager and he's, um, these are his concerns that you're sharing?
No.
So.
These are my concerns as the resident. Who's living here, who actually is going to be doing any type of renovating, uh, landscaping, uh, any changes that happen. It's good, it's, it's on me and my parish.
So it's, so correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to get your thoughts and ideas.
Be my own personal.
And the concern is that, that you would have to oversee and the church would have to bear the cost. Of, of opting into the historic preservation ordinance, that's your primary concern? Okay.
Um, or helping others express their.
Okay.
I'm still trying to figure out what this is, what this is all about and how it really impacts me, because I, I have no adjacent buildings. I don't understand how any of this impacts me, to tell you the truth. Other than this is going to be another hoop to jump through if I want to put a garden in my backyard. If I'm going to change my windows. You know, and I know that, that parishioners wanted to, wanted me to put a, an awning outside the church in order to protect our door. And we were told no because of the constable, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know anything about it.
That's the first I've heard of this.
About this. Oh, so thank you for that clarification, and then Ms. Layton, did I get it right? So, um. All right, I just want to start with, it's not about me, but I want to, you brought up your parapet, sharing a parapet, and, you know. I just recently made a rather profound investment in the sewer line. So I understand your concerns about sharing a parapet with the property owner next to you. And so my question is, because you've brought up the parapet a number of times, I mean, is there something that you want to do to change the parapet? And as you've read the ordinance requesting that it be, that a parapet and the building that you stay within alignment or visual. I've heard that you're an artist and that you, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, I can talk design elements and composition with you. So is there something that you have planned to do to a parapet? Which would conflict with the other, with your half of the parapet that would conflict with the other half of the parapet?
Uh, we have no, we get plans for that, but it's no issue throughout the document about, um, parapet walls. Uh, this talks about, like, any new build needing to repair to this circular architecture, but it also talks about restoration. Preservation of these features is required for rehabilitation or repair of these instructions.
So, so I'm trying to think, like, along what could happen in the future? And so it would really be shared space, and you probably thought I was joking about, I just invested in sewer line, but it's a bigger reality.
If it's not, if it's not part of the neighborhood property, you're already dealing with, you have to sell to neighbors, so we need to have it succeed.
So that's your concern?
Yeah, it's just another layer.
I have a tremendous amount of input that comes from them.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I, if someone is auctioning or auctioning out, then it's not.
Sorry, I'm just kidding. My, my. Ideas. Sitting. Sitting. Here I have a, it's terrible. He's speaking, or something's happening where this nature deal with moldy, humid, something. Something. It has things in here that seem to occur. I, I. These are, these are what I'm bringing up, so.
It kind of.
And then, of course, you have a, I mean, yeah. This person. And we just. God. There. I finished. Thank you, I, I, I appreciate it. You're thinking the same thing that I thought you were thinking, but I wanted to make sure I understood. There is a, on, about this part. So. Would be, yeah. I, I totally understand you. Let's do this. I'll. And. Well, specific.
So, I, but go ahead, maybe.
So, we're talking about additional costs to the property versus they want to quote anything, I don't know, five of fifteen. Number two, it says preservation of all of these features is required for rehabilitation or repair of these. So if I pull a permit fix a parapet law, all of a sudden I've got to, to restore a sluro.
No.
Well, that's.
It would just apply to the, to the whatever it needs to repair, it would not reply, apply to the entire facade.
So that maybe needs to be clarified. Permit, of course, only for those that are going to do, because the rate this reads is that you would have to conserve the sport for terror or existing. Um, prepare. Rehabilitation, they have to do this. All you're doing is pulling a permit to, to change that approach, and all of a sudden you've got, you can get a hold of this side because there's nothing anywhere that's set up this. Permit that you pulled, that's all they have to do to work is.
Well, that's the way per, permits are now, so if you were to pull a permit today to restore or to replace a toilet, we would not require you to do anything to the facade of your building. And that would carry over to this as well, if, so if you're going to do plumbing, we're not going to require you to upgrade the facade of your building or do anything to it at all. But if, uh, we can add language clarifying that, if that is, makes it more palatable, yes, I have no problem adding that sort of language.
Quick question, just. What historic is, as a building system now, like, attacked?
Hmm.
It's been, it's a parallel decision, because residence can change multiple times. So who's going to be the authority to say, this is the year they're going to say that?
So I think that looking at the, the Baker Building, which is the one with the, um, uh, the, the spa and the virgin cheese is a good example. And also the Main Street Cafe, because that had an awning added at one point, and how long has that neon sign been there, maybe, do you know? The, at the restaurant, the, the Main Street Cafe.
It was installed in fifty-seven.
Okay. So, the way it works is that if it's, if, those are now considered historic because they're more than fifty years old. So they don't, no one has to remove anything, nobody has to do anything with any of those changes that were made m- more than fifty years ago, right? Because those are now historic in their own right.
So hypothetically, so you would come in, say you want to reduce. So hypothetically, if I wanted to make a historical aspect of a building, correct me if I'm over, we throw on a wraparound porch, tear off the roof, rebuild the rest of the effect. That's the new historic.
That would have to be the benchmark, I mean, uh, the. Yes.
I, I don't quite know, so if it's a residence, it's not subject to.
Right.
But if, if my community residence is turning, turns commercial building, even today, all commercial buildings are subject to designer. They all are. Certain things that, it's a, it's a line. It goes properly in jazz. Got a line, only get about, those, uh, applications. Is directory considered a residence? Um, so.
That would be an accessory use to the, the church itself.
So we did that, yes or no?
Yes, it's a residence, but it's part of the, the church building, it's not a freestanding, separate, single-family residential structure.
So yes.
Oh. Directory was built in existence. It's attached to the church building, so it's listed as a particular structure. Uh, but if you want to modify that, all reality, nobody would give you a hard time for modifying it correctly. A good example of where you would have issues is historic church building itself, which was built in nineteen twenty. You want to take the tower down and break out the windows and this type, that would be a major change to the structure. We already have a church building in Parkdale, nothing like the deal, it's currently the library, this region built as a community church in nineteen fifteen. And in the early sixties, the night of death was moved to the fifth town, the fourth falls. They would change the work of the end of mission seventy-six, uh, but it was still kind of recognizable as a church. Uh, the most significant changes happened after it became town property, and they completely changed the, put that attraction like blood house. But, you know, the thing it was probably worse than, but it was not in nineteen sixteen. Uh, but it's the needle falls, the falls, it's one of the structures. So, it's nothing like. Only a couple, Parkdale has very, very few structures compared to, pressed in, glassed out, everything. That's why it's so much more urgent that we can technically, technically build a new town. Because we can't afford to lose any one of the structures. Kind of luckily, not on wood, it only lasts a whole day of your structure. It was actually at the time in nineteen eighty, the then owner, the, the, came to the town of Parkdale and presented the level of discovered business block. As you thought, it's, it's happening at the same time. But luckily, it even carried through with them.
That's okay.
Okay, we've been at this for an hour, so if you do a time check and people see how everyone's feeling about moving forward, okay?
On this slide, there was a, um, uh, yeah, a slide there, talked about the interior, and I would like to ask a little bit, but. What building in this district that was closing would be subject to the interior design? It was on the first slide, you put up.
Sure. I'm still in there.
Building you're sending, that's what I thought, okay.
This one, um, the, uh, I think the bank building still has the vault. And, but again, that means we'd have to go back and take a look at the actual national, uh, national register application to make sure that that was a contributing factor, right? But of all of the buildings, there are very few that the interior would matter. It's, the, the purpose of this is to preserve the facades, to preserve the locks, the berths, to preserve the feel of down, of the historic buildings. And not to come inside, and you can't have that tile, and you can't have this color, and you can't have this, and you can't have that.
Commissioner, what's the purpose for a railroad property? Why not just signal in on specific buildings, why call that?
We can, we can focus in on specific.
Question, what, what was the thought process?
To encompass as many of the historic structures down there as we could in one boundary, essentially.
I have a question, just for clarification. And I think I asked you this, like, what's the main, and am I correct that this line, this will allow you to get certified local government status? Which will enable the town to apply for grants through SHPO for bricks and mortar and other projects? That the main reason that this is happening?
In order to be able to apply for those grants, we have to have CLG status, and it's not just those grants, and that's not the only reason that we're doing this. There are other foundation grants out there that individual building owners can apply to, Drake was just successful in getting a substantial amount of money from the, uh, the, um, uh, State Historic Preservation Office. So.
But it wasn't, it wasn't hinging on whether or not this was.
No, it was not, but it, regardless, there are certain standards that he has to meet to be able to qualify for those grants. And they're very, very similar to what's in here. There's not much difference at all, am I correct?
Question. We were having, I don't know if they don't.
Right. So the other reason is many people have stated here, Craig was probably the most eloquent, was to be, help preserve the, the nature of downtown, the historic nature of downtown. Yes, there have been changes made to these buildings over the years, some of them were great, some of them not so great. Um, at one point, the theater building had a roll-up garage door on it, that's not so great. That. Uh, and it was bricked in at one point, too, so those are the kind of things that we're trying to, uh, to avoid here. That's why we're trying to get just some basic review, some basic understanding of, of what these buildings look like. So that somebody can't come in and buy the theater and brick it up again, or put a roll-up window on it. Or a roll-up garage door on it, that's what we're trying to do here, it's not to make everybody's life more miserable. It's not to say you're going to do these things because the town said so, it's to help preserve the character of the downtown. If you look at Cottonwood, Cottonwood has a, a historic preservation ordinance, theirs is mandatory, it was adopted before Prop two oh seven. So. Sure.
May I, may I speak?
Absolutely.
So I know exactly what you're about to say right now, and, and I'm there with you one hundred percent. The design review criteria parallels. Essentially what the historic preservation ordinance asks of us as property owners in Parkdale. The difference is we need a historic preservation ordinance for our town. So that we can become, and you as property owners can become eligible for the kind of grants that are out there. That, that's the most practical application I can give you.
Yes.
It has to say, you can't, you can't, you can't, if we have an idea for another and it would be positive, vulnerable, crowdfunding, grant earning, uh, advocacy, assistance on, what's the word? Incentive.
We think, we, I think, I think, but if we didn't anything that would be a problem is I, I think Okay, let's enter that, and prepare, we're concerned that
So this is, I, you have to, I'll, I'll make this real quick, in a second. That's why, that's why I
Yeah, we'll, okay, but you, everybody get that, we'll, we'll, uh, the commission will entertain it in our next month's meeting.
So this is a very This is a very creative approach, and as a creative person I tend to go, well, why don't we also do whatever everybody else did? And what if there are some very different approach that can have the end result that I think we want? So that's where this is coming from, I have other problems.
So, so if I Florence's State Historic Preservation Office, if I, you know, something to consider.
I, I totally get what you're saying, but if I, please I totally get what you're saying, and I totally get the positive and creative response to the situation. But this is my however. And I have one, too, because we would be in a standard thing, so, go ahead. So, this is my however, and it's the best parallel that I can come up with, it may not be appropriate at this point, but, um I was the dean of a minority college. So working with pedestrians and visual artists and musicians and dancers. And we, one of our objectives was to become what the federal government and our accrediting agency referred to as a minority serving institution. And then they had a list of what they considered minorities to serve. And so, if we could demonstrate that we had curriculum and objectives, so I'm talking about education, so it's a different language. But if we could demonstrate that we had the equivalent of an ordinance at our institution that was directed towards serving minorities, and there were a list of minorities and we put it in the form that they wanted in, we could be eligible for a whole lot of money to help with our music and our painting and our ceramics and our sculpture and our dance programs. And so, you know, it's answering to the higher power and the higher power being the ones with more resources to help us. And so, I totally understand, and I really appreciate everyone's contribution and indulging me with my obsessive note-taking clarification. But it's like, I get it. But we, we answer to a different, or a, for lack of a better term, higher power. And so, we have to, we have to put the rules in the language that they under, the suggestions, the recommendations in the format that they expect. Does that help? Or not really?
They haven't written the rules, but you're trying to conform the rules as best as you see to fit their ideals.
We have restrictions on things that we can do, things that we can regulate, things we can't regulate a- as, as a public entity, as, as, as a political subdivision of the state of Arizona. And it, it's very difficult to write an ordinance in a positive fashion. I'm not saying it can't be done, it's just difficult to do because we try to anticipate, that's why this thing is as long as it is. Is because we have to try and anticipate every objection that we're gonna get, every, every problem that's going to arise. Those are all the things that we have to, we have to look down the road and see, what are people going to object to? How is this, how are we gonna end up in court over this? How are we gonna end up in court over something else? Who's gonna argue with us over this definition, or that definition, or this regulation? And that's why ordinances end up reading the way they do. We try to be nice and it, we just get slaughtered for it. Right, there's, there are very technical legal aspects to it. That's why when we send these packets out, you'll see the red lines in here, that's what we call the red text. We're required to send that out, even though everybody hates reading it. Because it just confuses everybody and everything. I'm required to do it. I would just as soon save twelve trees and not do it, but I have to.
I'm sorry. Who actually drove, had the needs of the
Um, we had a gentleman from, uh, that, let's see, he was, he was from the valley, his name was John Fro. He's been a planner and, uh, managed the historic district for Wendale, that's what I was gonna say, for twelve years, yeah.
So did we do the architect callouts, the photos?
No, we did those.
We don't got placed for anything else, right? Those are not placed for anything else. They're called things that are transmissible, and you should look at the original plans of the buildings. And also just second time the interiors standards. They're always not in the document. They're called trans.
So there's been a lot of discussion about whether they're clear story or, or, or transom. So we can change that.
So we would have some concerns you know, with the document has that estate in it?
That will negatively impact any renovation. And this doc, if this document is accepted, then you would actually have to do something that would be taken away, historical aspect.
No, it might be relevant, but the question that's about is, or in total, we'd be going from a test period of law, and this is a
Just, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would defend that it's not a state, one of the future of the ordinance, something to consider, but this ordinance was drafted to, to, uh, properties of the condition itself, would be the properties of ten sports. So if you put it over there, uh, they don't make it present. Uh, but the, the thought at the time was that you like, it's similar, and these are personal, and those are contracts. So, I, I don't consider that to be something so important that it's documented, that that's good concept of separability of Well, it's, it's good input, I appreciate it, but, you know, I'd like to kind of maybe offer something, talking about footprint of the district itself, and things like that. Oh, by the way, uh, a good portion of this, at least in my mind, is to make sure that the town buildings actually follow the same standards, um, because the town owns the city, so instructions. But I have to learn to go and bring this up, but is there a objection to that, with this historic district plants, or tents, or that, and would it be more acceptable if those vacant properties, they can land, it's drawn out of this? Well, my question is Yeah, that's, that's one of the concerns we're, obviously, all the land around Roseland, right? So if we decided to build a new roundhouse, a square roundhouse then, obviously, it'd be part of the sort, that the, and it would have to be subject to that review. But what do we face, I, I, the DM, I'm just going to ask you It's a very good, I mean, industrial building Our industrial building can't be made to run by thirteen structures. Well, good. Well, no, it's not, it's just not, it's not So, and that kind of brings the point of the existing building. Now, we can mention the roundhouse, the house is very precious. Doesn't hold, stand in the equivalent, it's not, the townhouse, but the rest of it is property examined, um, starting in nineteen sixty um, the then owners of the town, when it's demolition they had enclosures of the smokestack, throughout windows, stamping families, uh, then ownership of the wreck, they're developing So the document on the evidence, some of the buildings down there today are, especially work, and days, but nonetheless, they're in the status of having been modified, um it's not realistic with any building going, and saying, I'm going to restore this. It's funny, just actually lucky that they're standing today, it would be a huge loss if somebody came up and asked the buildings, I don't know any other place in person that has a cluster of industrial buildings that have ages that are so standing. It's gotta add a lot to the goal of, go right to move on, but but I do think there is a case to think that drawing, that you guys, that basically, excuse the question, area on this, doesn't exclude from the underground modifying the station now, right?
Right.
It's not the same as this business district or parking or even could be some flexibility in terms of just parking, helping increase the budget. And that's it. They currently have vacant properties, next to the bricks and the cement. Times already have a key on it.
They have been worked on, I can
Yeah, the concept, we build a fuel site, and then it's not a fuel site that then, the, the hallway problem, you know, and why, all that vacant land is vacant, they're full on, it's Maybe that was just subject to normal designing, and the only purpose of
I said, the unfortunate part is that, that the economic reality is, is
I think, yeah, the, the, well, even if it's a, uh, if it's an apartment complex, that it's, well, people think it's residential, that's still so, same. Anyway, um, just focusing on this one block between what is the ninth and the tenth street nation, crunchers, we're talking, don't want somebody to come here, doing things that are a bit down the property, it's stuck on, you know, the covered up with such, well, well, heating, waters please, something like that, but they're doing it better. Property values, of people that have spent a lot of and, and I think that if we're not in the building, I would never do that, I wouldn't do it, but people have done those things in other areas. And that's why, they, they will have a way to, like, for properties, this is, wow. So, just a thought in terms of focusing this down affecting what you're really building for, sixteen properties or whatever they are up there. Cheating with the facilities, equipment, and stuff. Understanding that the one side's about solid, the other side's that makes it just really a more
If you can reduce the area, reduce, 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 right, and just make the town's buildings for historic preservation area.
Downtown.
Have it down
Well, that's basically what I'm saying, is that
Well, no, excluding us, we just have a good, this, that, and that. You can make it any size you want, and this is the, the only interiors we care about.
Yeah, the ordinance of design, as well as all of the things out there, you talk about historic preservation. If you want tax credits and things like that, I mean, yeah, you might be considering that for the three so to this come up, you can have tax credits, it's definitely, that it based like this, a lot of the history, then just demolition, I'm in that, Celia and Ruth, they were in, Graceville, they're in So, it's really about the, the the prison glass, that original orders of window design, and this type of things that they, things for the properties, very, very
Excuse me, is that Zoom audio any better?
Much better, Todd, thank you. So, you know, luckily, Parkdale has got so much in cap. Even though it's been more than seventy years since, probably, seventy four forty-five years, since, town was mostly big ones. So, lucky that the buildings have burn, uh, like these roads don't need to be burned, it's, it's, there's really just a self-created, the building itself is possible. So, you know, um Okay, we're at an hour and a half, twelve-thirty o'clock, I think, if you need another work session, um, you can have another one.
Can we still get a Zoom comment?
I'm sorry?
One more, please, please, a second. Okay, all right, go ahead, Todd.
Yes, yes, I, sorry to go backwards just a little bit, and I apologize for the audio earlier. Uh, one was on the interiors. Um, I would really, first, I just really support the idea of a historic ordinance, I appreciate us getting together. I appreciate Craig's comment about preserving the, the core downtown and what makes it special. But, um, the, the interior part of it, it doesn't seem like, you know I, I would just like to see that not have the interior. And then secondly was, um, when you talk about, uh, structures that are over fifty years old, would that include the, um the storage lockers at some point? I mean, would those kind of already fall under, would that be a historic storage facility? Um, and could you elaborate a little bit on, on not having interior section, uh, the possibility of not having an interior requirement?
So, I think we can talk about the interior requirement, I, that's obviously concerning to several people, so I think we can have a conversation about maybe amending that language. Um, it, but with respect to the, um, storage lockers I don't think that they would qualify as historic structures simply because, you know, and not to insult Carrie and her storage lockers there's really not much architecturally significant about those. And that's really one of the things that the, that when you form a district, when you register properties that's one of the things, that's one of the main things that they look at is, is does, is this property, or was it ever historically significant? Either through architecture, people that lived there, things that happened there? Is there something historically significant that, that, that building needs to be on the national register? And if there is, has it retained enough of the historic, or the architectural elements for it to be, still be on the register? So if that, that, if those buildings had, um, some sort of ornamental brickwork on them that was pulled off the answer would be no, because all of the ornamental brickwork is now gone. So those buildings would not be part, would not be in a historic district simply by virtue of the fact that they're fifty years old.
Would, would the properties that are, would the structures that are on that property that do have historic, or just if the, the brick one, or some of the other ones that, that are original to the town, would those most likely be historic structures?
I'd have to go back and look honestly, Todd, at what is specifically, which of those buildings are on, on the register as a contributing structure, structure versus a non-contributing structure? And I, I don't have that list in front of me right now, so.
And, and the reason for the question is probably just alluding to what might happen, you know, behind the alley there, what, what might get built or not get built uh, i- in that area. Uh, thank you for letting me participate.
Yeah, no, but we appreciate your participation, so I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
I just wanted to, um let people know, but I appreciate the positive aspect, who would be, or this, I want to point out, you have this two-page large format, these are our aspirational, positive things, missions. But it also includes ordinance, which does have to have specifically the language for all of them, down to the shirt line. So we are gonna go with the, for our
Okay, so seven fifty-nine, I would like to adjourn this meeting and, yeah. Uh, people that have joined us tonight would like to join us at our next official meeting. Um, we will have a work period for that.
We, if, if everybody wants to do this again, we're happy to do it.
Much more efficient, uh, present. At our next. So without further ado.
I'm going to work on the administration. I remember this point that we, um, on the question, this is even. So this is the nineteen eighty-seven. The historic resource survey is done and basically that can work. So our district. Um, so it's not very likely that we can, about changes. But we're simply talking about the Main Street Business Block between Ninth and Tenth Street. The buildings that are not listed as contributing to this district are, at that time, was the old ten twelve. Gas station at that time was not. Would be contributing. Um, all of the restaurant buildings and all the buildings from Grace Corner there, the street market, all of the rest of the, so very, very similar. From the block and find there. Snyder's. The only building there is just contributing is one carpenter shop, one restaurant. Kitchen facility, everything else there. True. That's currently not a, a destination street for commerce. Um, so. About this, if anyone else is taking the battle.
So that just basically means even though they're within the district, the, this would not apply to them. Is that what you're saying? Even though that they're within the district of the ordinance? Because it's literally, it clearly shows the, the yellow gold lights go around all the buildings that are not contributing.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it was done. It's out of property, it's sort of itself, the sort of district itself, it's brought around the entire historical outline of the forest. Canon.
Thank you.
Including homes and those type of things. So the homes in Parkdale are listed in this district. The homes in Parkdale are not.
But what you're, but to clarify, what you're saying is that those, those buildings like the storage units and things like that that are not contributing would not actually be part of the ordinance either. Is that, is it like right-hand say? So let's see.
Those offices and the, the, the. That was not really the, those offices are. So anyway, that's, that's kind of like the conversation for those in July, the districts. Around. The houses.
Let's go. I say, all right, you're going to adjourn here for your thinker.